Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council's study session agenda for this Monday, January nine, two thousand and twenty-three. We've got a few items for discussion tonight. We'll start with our review of the two thousand and twenty-three Citizens Advisory Board Committee and Commission work plans. And then we'll roll into a discussion of the city council liaisons to these various board committee and commissions. So with this, we'll start with our assistance to the city manager, Michael Vargas. Will help review the work plans with us.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. I will be reviewing the work plans for the various advisory board committees and commissions, starting on page three of your packet tonight. I will begin with the Arts Commission. So, the Arts Commission is comprised of twelve members, with currently a council liaison, Councilmember Bell, with city staff support from the Parks and Recreation Department. The monthly meeting schedule is noted below. And another note here, for two thousand and twenty-three, the Arts Commission will have two committees. One for public art, to include Colonial Plaza art, utility box wraps, murals, special events, and rotating art. And a second committee dedicated to the performing arts, such as film competitions, the Colonial Plaza events, and the summer concert series. So, before you are the fifteen work plan items for the Arts Commission. This should look somewhat similar to the previous year, although I would like to highlight a few items here. So, for number three, we have the one-time special event at Motor Ave Plaza for public art unveiling. For number six, we have the recruitment and retention of Arts Commission members, as we would like to recruit arts people and retain them on the commission. For number seven, we have rotating artists at City Hall about every two months. Number eight, we have one mural installation, and that is to be in the town center between Bed Bath &amp; Beyond and the Catapult, sort of youth recreation business there. Number nine, we have the ten signal box wrapped installations. While by number ten, implement one sculpture for rotating art per the public art plan. And jumping down to the bottom there at fifteen, assessing future public location for displaying the Lancer Shield and the Library Log.
Just a sec there, Mr. Vargas. Mr. Branstad had a question.
Mr. Vargas, and I know that the item fifteen, the assessing a public location for displaying the Lancer Shield and the Library Log slab, is a recent task that's done. But I note that it never appears in the topics for the twelve months. And, you know, so, you know, I would. And maybe it's just that, that because it's a recent, it isn't, it isn't scheduled yet. But then you just would want to make sure it doesn't get omitted that way. And, Miss Mayor, I would just note that this is a pretty ambitious work plan for the Arts Commission. I think finding rotating artists every two months in the City Hall is something we've not been able to achieve in the past. Since, and while I really like the art in the, in the City Hall, being able to go and do that. You know, and changing it over, it would be nice if they're able to do that. As long as agreeing with an artist to display their art for two months, doesn't get us into a situation of, because we can't find the follow-on artists, we end up with two months with no art because of doing that, to be able to, 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 to look at it. But I think that this is a, this is a group that does a good job of tasking themselves to, to do good things, and I think this work plan reflects that.
It's robust, for sure. Councilmember Bell had a comment there.
Oh. Okay, there we go. It is a very robust, thank you, Mayor, sorry about that. It is a very robust plan, but I just came out of the Arts Commission meeting, and they are here for it. It is not something that they don't think that they can't attain and do. And it's actually, the rotating art will be every three months, they're doing it, I believe, quarterly, so that will be an adjustment. And I really don't think that they will have any issue finding artists to rotate out and to really bring in some art into City Hall. So, one thing that I, they were very excited about it, because at the previous reception, it was quite a few people, and it was really well received, and the artists were very excited, and the artists have even more art that they would like to display that specific group, and they had talked a little bit more. So, I think it will be well received and something that will be successful along with this work plan.
Does anyone have a, a closer date in time for item three, the public art unveiling in Motor Avenue? It's only been a process going on now, what, three, four years, between artist number one, artist number two, buckle my shoe, you know?
All the. Mayor, what they did talk about at the meeting today is that it was this spring, so that's all I know, and that they're planning for the opening, and the concrete is laid down, I believe.
It's all done.
And the lighting, so it is, it is close.
Checks in the mail, as they say. Anything else to add on that, Mr. Vargas, or are you gonna go to the next one? Okay. Lake District Management.
Yeah, so moving on to the American Lake, Lake Management District number one Advisory Committee. This committee is comprised of six members, with city staff support from the Public Works Engineering Department. And really, the purpose of this committee is to address any invasive aquatic vegetation that may pop up at the American Lake. So just to go over a few work items from their schedule here, in March, there would be preparation for member outreach via postcard or newsletter, for distribution in May. Also in May, conduct the beginning of season aquatic vegetation survey from the hired contractor. Also by the contractor, in June through August, conduct invasive aquatic vegetation control activities or herbicide treatment. In August, there will be an update to the Committee on Treatment Activities by the contractor. And ending with a, in October, a season aquatic vegetation survey. And there will be a review of the control slash treatment report provided by the contractor in November by the committee. And we have the work, we have the budget also included in this work plan.
Correct me if I'm wrong in the budget, aren't those monies funded by the lake folks themselves? Don't they self-tax, kind of like Lake Stillicum Improvement Club?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna double-check that. So even the city admin cost of two grand, is that part of their budget, or is that part of ours? Mr. Coffield's gonna address that.
Yeah, Mayor Waylon, the council, so the, yeah, each of the property owners on the lake pay their respective share, so the city is a property owner as well as JBLM and then Camp Murray, and so they all pay their respective amounts based on, there's a formula that calculates each annual assessment. And then the city oversees it.
Very good. Any questions on that one? Looks like it's pretty self-explanatory. Okay, Community Services Advisory Board.
Yeah, so for the Community Services Advisory Board work plan, we have five members with a city council liaison to be determined currently. We also have four youth council liaisons. We have city staff support from our Human Services Coordinator, as well as from the Community Economic Development Department. And we have the monthly schedule outlined below, although I would like to go over the four work plan items here. So number one would be review of the two thousand and twenty-two Human Services Contract Performance. Number two would be approve, and review and approve the two thousand and twenty-two CAPR, which is the Year End HUD Activity Report. Third item there would be a public hearing on community economic, community development, housing and services needs. And finally, we have the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-three CDBG slash home funding strategies.
Since we went through this one fairly recently, we're all familiar with the process. Any questions, comments? Okay. Moving on, Landmarks and Heritage.
Yeah, so the Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board is comprised of five members, with the council liaison, councilmember Bokey, with staff support from the Development Services Manager, as well as additional staff from the CED Department. The monthly schedule is outlined below, and just for background information, the mission of the City of Lakewood Landmark and Heritage Advisory Board is to preserve, protect, and promote the unique heritage and historic resources of the City of Lakewood. Some two thousand and twenty-two accomplishments include completed preliminary draft edits to the Lakewood Touring Map, as well as recruiting a new member to the L-HAB. As for the twenty-three work plan itself, we have a number of ongoing projects carried over from the previous year, although I would like to note on the next page, page eight, the last three items of the work plan there, starting from the third from the top. We have an update to the Lakewood History and Historic Preservation Website to include Heritage Tree Designation Information and FAQs. The next item is to work with Lakewood Gardens on the expansion slash modifications to existing structures. And finally, in cons, in consultation with the city's communications director, develop relevant historic videos to place on the city's website, with the role of L-HAB listed below.
Mr. Branstad.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would just say that in one area that this work plan was not what I expected. That has to do with the, the Heritage Tree program that was my expectation, and I thought that when we discussed this with this committee jointly, that when we established that, that we were looking for them to make a proposal to us as to the process and the criteria to have a tree designated as a heritage tree, or a group of trees designated as a heritage tree. And I actually envisioned them having a role in reviewing those applications as the same way that they do designation of other historic and heritage items to do that. This work, work plan is worded that there wouldn't be doing that work. They'd just be putting somebody else's work on the website, which, and doesn't seem to indicate that they have a anticipate a role for them in evaluating any nominations for heritage trees whenever one might come forward. And I don't know if, so I'd really like to see the work plan be have, have some tasks in it, and some expectations that we expect them to do, and, and maybe that's in order to do that, maybe there is some amendment to the resolution or ordinance that created this committee to assign them that task, so that it shows up somewhere. When we did meet jointly with them, I did sense they weren't enthusiastic about it. But they're the right place and group for us to do a heritage tree like other historic elements to do that.
So your, your point is on page eight of the packet, or page two of this particular work plan at the top, where it says, update Lakewood History and Historic Preservation Website to include the Heritage Tree Designation Information and FAQs, and in the bottom, where it's referenced, the new assignment is to designate those trees. Perhaps we flesh this out and require, as part of the work plan, that they develop a process in consultation with community development to ensure that there is consistency in the designation process with our existing code.
Mr. Mayor, when the city council adopted its street preservation code, it actually amended portions of the L-HAB to include a designation criteria, criteria for, for trees.
Okay.
The whole process is outlined in that code itself.
Got it.
And it's found in two point four eight point oh four zero. Right now, because this is a new program, the language that's found in the document is kind of a placeholder, as we've worked with them on, on possible designations, whether it's the property owner submitting an application, or something that a heritage tree application is being submitted by the Parks Board.
Right, the criteria is in the code.
The criteria is in the code, it's just, you know, if it's desire, we can spell that a little bit more, more in detail on the work plan. It's not a problem.
Very good. Does that help? Mr. Branstad? Flesh it out a bit more?
Well, I guess that I would certainly hope that I would. Maybe my expectation, it would be that they update us on some progress here mid-year.
I think that would be appropriate. The challenge of that committee is they're thin on ranks and consulting expertise to work. I think their budget's pretty low, as I recall, but it's a big task. Okay, I think we understand that addition, or what do you wanna call it, massaging of the work plan a bit. Let's now go to the Advisory Board, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board.
Yeah, so for the Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board, I invite members of the council to look at the handout I gave, which just has some more workshop language for the three work plan items. But to begin, this board is comprised of nine members, along with four youth council members, with the city council liaison as Deputy Mayor Moss, with city staff support from the Human Services Coordinator. The monthly meeting schedule, along with items, is presented below, but to overview the three work plan items for this year, the first one is to review annual initiatives, such as the youth mental health and workforce development initiatives. Second item is to develop a communication plan for the board initiatives focusing on student successes. The third item being coordination with youth council on the Youth Council Summit.
Great.
So, looking at page ten of the packet, we have the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee. This committee is comprised of five members, with city staff support from the Administrative Services Department. And we have the meeting schedule with tentative dates provided, just to give an overview. The first item is in July is to attend the Joint Lodging Tax Advisory Committee meeting to discuss the LTAC in general, review guidelines, past grants awarded, and potential funding available for two thousand and twenty-four grant awards. The next item around September, review lodging tax grant applications in advance of day-long presentations. The LTAC shall receive the applications at least forty-five days before final action or passage of proposals by the city council. Also in September, listen to presentations from potential lodging tax grant recipients. The committee will review, rate, and make funding recommendations that will be forwarded to the city council for deliberation. After that, the committee will meet as needed to review lodging tax grant applications next year, and provide funding recommendations to the city council for consideration. We also have that the committee will present recommendations to the city council in November, followed up by any further review and recommendations as requested by the city council.
Very straightforward. Mr. Branstad.
Mr. Mayor, I think it's straightforward, what we're, what we're used to. My only question was, the, the work of this committee seems to extend up until the point of where they make recommendations to us, and then react to our reaction to the recommendations. And I note that two of the members' terms will expire. And I'm not quite sure why their terms expire on a November first, while the others have a spent on December thirty-first of a year, but we may want to look as to whether there is just something that we can administratively do to extend the term of those two members to December thirty-first of this year, so that we don't end up with appointing two new members on November first who haven't had any, done anything else with the, with the previous process.
We should be able to do that. Maybe a Ms. Walker question, and I'm not sure why they're staggered like that, but there may be some reason why we can make them consistent, maybe every two years, but they should be on the same day, like twelve thirty-one as opposed to eleven one. It may have been when they were appointed, I guess, in a two-year cycle.
Who is this for the, the terms of the committee members?
Yeah, lodging tax.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that there's a legal requirement for how that's done. I would have to look at that and get back to you. Sometimes you have people staggered so that there's experience balanced with new perspective.
Yeah, we just take a look at it before we get into the, the work. We've got several months that we can double-check, and if we need to administratively extend to the twelve thirty-one.
Yeah. I will also tell you that I think there has been off and on effort to try and keep a full complement on that committee, and sometimes that's got to do with the, the tenures as well.
Yeah, that's true, too. The only, the only other thought I had, and then I'll go to Deputy Mayor Moss, is it would be good internally, since we learned the hard way a bit this last go-around, that the capital portion of lodging tax funds have to be for a city-owned facility. So it would be really good that we come into this year with some internal thoughts and recommendations to the council, so we can chew on it, because we're the ones that are gonna have to make the pitch or some recommendation to the committee to consider, you know, lodging tax applications for capital funding, right? But we want to know what that is going to look like before we have the city make the recommendation or the ask by way of application to the, the committee. I think that would be prudent. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just curious if the two that are expiring in November, do they have to come off, or can they be renewed?
They can renew. Yeah, they can renew.
They can, okay.
And typically, they do. I know that Shaleen is renewed over the course of time, I believe, because she's with Travel Tacoma, and Linda Smith has been on here since time immemorial, I think, so, yeah. And they will, Bill, Alexander, Linda will probably. Okay, Planning Commission, unless there's any other thoughts on that one? This is a little bit perfunctory tonight, but we're doing it anyway, so.
Yeah, so for the Planning Commission work plan, page eleven, we have seven members here, with the council liaison of councilmember Bokey, and staff support from the Community Economic Development Department. And so, we have the schedule below, because this is quite extensive. I will go through each of the items here, starting with review of city council two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-four goals to be completed in the first quarter, as well as review of the two thousand and twenty-three Annual Housing Action Plan. Moving on to the multi-family tax exemption code update in the first two quarters, as well as the shoreline restoration activities and plan review, also in the first two quarters. Now going into the larger items here, the first three quarters expected, and the two thousand and twenty-three Comprehensive Plan Amendment Docket, including the following items below, as well as the two thousand and twenty-four periodic review of comprehensive plan maps and text, development regulations, and critical areas ordinance, expected to continue past the year as noted. Moving on to the next page.
Mr. Anderson has a question.
Do you have the end of terms for the members of this committee?
Not at this time.
Probably would be good to have an update, just to have in parentheses beside their name, their end terms.
Yeah, happy to include that, yep. So, wrapping up on the next page, page twelve, we have the two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-eight Six-Year Transportation Improvement Program Review, the second quarter. We also have the review and development of recommendations on the applications for the two thousand and twenty-four Comprehensive Plan Docket in quarter three and four. And also, we have the review and development of recommendations on Annual Development Regulation Amendment Package. Technical edits to the following LMC titles also in quarter three and four. There are two additional, well, two work plan items that are not included in this packet before you tonight, but are included in the work plan. And that would include a review of the Climate Change Annual Report, as well as review of the non-motorized transportation plan.
Mr. Bokey, any thoughts or comments? I think we hear more a little bit about that later. Okay, Parks and Rec.
Yeah, so, starting on page fourteen, we have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, comprised of seven members, along with the council liaison, councilmember Anderson, and city staff support from the Parks and Recreation Department. We have the monthly schedule outlined below. I would like to draw your attention to the ten work plan items for the year. I'll go over some key ones here, with the first one being the Nisqually Partnership Project Update. Number six, the Street End Update. Number seven, the Park Sign Project Update, which is to expand, which is lately to an expansion to the scope to also include wayfinding signs and reader boards. So number eight, we have a review of the Climate Change Initiatives and Tree Preservation Ordinance. Number nine, as requested, a review of the park code for site or facility naming processes. And number ten, we have reviewing future expansion opportunities at Camp Murray and Historic Fort Stillicum. This is in alignment with the recent legislative priorities passed by the council. And we have the schedule below.
So just to be clear, item six in the work plan, first, item seven, rather, the Park Sign Project Update also is going to include wayfinding signage throughout the city, and the two reader boards that we put funds in for Marfa, right?
Correct.
And the Parks Board somehow is gonna be doing the traffic work for that, and. And the parks board somehow is gonna be doing the traffic work for that and traffic analysis and all that stuff. Okay. Mr. Coughfield?
Mayor, I could just add to that. Um, so the short answer is yes, that's what we'd like to recommend to this council right now. The direction from the council is just to focus on arc signs. And then a separate silo, we have reader board signs. But what we'd like to recommend, and we're gonna bring this back to you for your review on, I think it's February thirteenth. Is to bring together as one package, a review of arc signs. The reader board signs and wayfinding signs, as well as some other elements of signage in the community. And do it as one comprehensive analysis, um, rather than again doing them, doing them in a silo. But the council hasn't officially taken action or given direction to that, but that's what our recommendation will be.
Okay. I thought the reader board centers was separate, but I'm fine to see it lumped together in kind of a cohesive way. Since it may or may not be located in rights of way that the parks folks maintain, right? So, okay, Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to add on to that, I know that we do have a meeting with the sign. Company the city is contracting and working with coming up soon. So I know that that is part of it and that it was included, the reader board, the way they're just trying to make everything very cohesive.
Okay.
So that will all be looked at and it's gonna be talked about.
Great. It'll be a sign of the times, so to speak. Next.
So, looking at page sixteen, we have the Public Safety Advisory Committee Work Plan. This committee is comprised of ten members, council liaison, council member Branstadter. Along with city staff support from the police chief, um, and police department. We have the schedule below, and I would like to go over the key items for the work plan this year. Number one, the adult slash group family homes and western state plans. This is essentially an update, uh, from a representative. With a representative from Western State Hospital, um, about their new forensic hospital. That is being planned, um, and the impacts of that, um, in regards to public safety in the community. Uh, especially in regards to any placements in adult family homes from that hospital in the community. So for number two, we have a business public safety survey. Um, this is a, essentially in the same vein as a community survey the city conducted recently, uh, but for businesses. And on the topic of public safety. Number three, we have municipal court's role in public safety. Again, representative from municipal court will give an overview, um, about. Processes and policies related to public safety. And number four, we have the Neighborhood Association Revitalization Roadmap. Um, essentially the committee will be looking at revitalizing the various neighborhood committee. Associations throughout the city, um, which have waned in sort of activity over the years due to COVID and interest. Sort of mapping out how to, how to reinvigorate them. And at the bottom, we have special events with the most noteworthy being the fallen officer food and blood drive in November.
Question, Mr. Branstad?
And the question, Mr. Mayor, I just wanna clarify that the business, uh. Public Safety Survey, um, has been pushed off into twenty twenty three into the, the middle of it. Primarily because the, this, this committee, uh. Wants to be able to make sure that they ask things that are actionable and they think they need the. Input of the new police chief before finalizing the survey, being able to go and do that so that it meets, uh. Uh, what, what he would like to see as well as, as himself.
It would be interesting to know kind of the method to the madness, how they're, they're going to go about. In addition to running a pass the chief, uh, structuring the questions, what they're focused on. Cause we had this really good retail association meeting recently, there may be some questions that come out of that that we want to dig further into. And then in my mind, the benefit of doing all of this is making sure we almost have kind of a business retention type. Approach to it where we do what we can to get these in the hands of the businesses that we seek the. Information from and to ensure the greatest possible participation. I don't know what the best approach to that would be, but Ms. Newton should be involved in that to some extent because she has great contacts. So. Cause we don't want the same sort of, uh, participation rate that we had in the community satisfaction survey. What do we have, like three people or something respond to that or maybe ten? I'm being facetious, but we, we want a greater participation as best we can.
Okay, anything else? Onto the next one?
So, on the next page. We have the Lakewood Youth Council. This is comprised of twenty-five members with a council liaison of council member Branstadter. And city staff support, uh, from the Parks and Recreation Department. They also have the, um, schedule listed below. Uh, which should look fairly familiar in years past, um, the youth council focusing on volunteering. At various city events and having a role in them as well. Although I would like to note, um, there is a focus on sort of determining dates and topics. For roundtable discussions. Um, these are to require, uh, schools and will discuss various topics. Um, to be found on page eighteen under additional topics of interest. Which may include mental health, youth leadership, um, and youth homelessness.
Yeah, they're doing good work this year, it seems like, so, Mr. Branstad, do you have anything to add?
Only that this is the one group whose year is different than the others. And, um, we may want to consider, um. As they form in September, uh, asking them to submit a work plan and approving it in September. Whereas opposed to in January when we're approving. Half of a work plan already accomplished and a, and, and a half to be accomplished. Um, is a recognition of, of. They sort of have a different, different year.
Yeah, a different calendar year in a sense. Cause they really don't start until, that's right, the first regular meetings in September. Any thoughts or comments on that? That's probably not a, a bad idea and it wouldn't impact us too unduly to do that. Yeah. That's kind of how it's structured anyway. It looks like the work plan really starts Septemberish after the kickoff event. So I think we're kind of there, aren't we, already, in a sense? And the work plan is structured September, roughly late August through June anyway, isn't it?
Well. I mean, this is certainly the plan for their twenty-two, twenty-three plan, but as we go into twenty-three, twenty-four. There are a number of ways that that could be done. It could be that. Some intended returning members could put something together over the summer and, and. To be able to present to us in, uh, September where we can pass the resolution. Giving them the go-ahead with, 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 with what they, they propose, uh, or something similar to that.
Probably a good idea to discuss them. They, they have such a heavy schedule in the spring, just getting ready for the, um, youth summer. But, you know, certainly some time they could squeeze in to develop ideas for the following year, yeah, I would think. Well, good, Mr. Vargas, that leads us to the end of that topic area. Do you have anything further on that before we roll into the next item?
No, Mayor.
Great. So on page nineteen of the packet, we've got our. Annual review of our liaison work to these various advisory boards, committees, and commissions. And so the easy question is, uh, who wants to switch and who wants to, who wants to be a giver? Who wants to be a receiver of anything different from what you are already posted on?
I'm good with the promise board because my LMCC board follows right there.
Hey, so Deputy Mayor Moss is good with Promise Advisory Board again. Mr. Bokey is fine with heritage, right, and advisory, and you've got planning commission. And you've also got the alternate to regional council. And you're good with. Well, it's part of the whole packet idea here, but we can look at just the first page, that's fine, just the, the liaison positions first. And then we can go to the other outside boards. So, community services advisory boards are rotating from. Well, Mr. Branstad?
Mr. Mayor? I do think that the two of the positions that council member Farmer had, uh, do have activities. And that we need to keep representation going in the, in the first quarter. And that has to do with the, the shape folks and the, the, the Community Services Advisory Board. For myself, I'd be interested in one of those two, to, to do that. I'm also certainly willing, because I've been on the South Sound nine-one-one board for ten years. I'm willing to trade with someone for that, to do that. I think I'm. I'm perhaps getting weary and they may be getting weary of me. Um, you know, and, and while I'd be willing to do that, I, I certainly, uh. I certainly have an interest if, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you're not planning to move up to be the primary member. That represents us at the SHAPE Executive Committee. Um, that, um, you know, I'd be willing to be the, the alternative to that or, or, or serve on that committee to do that. Um, and that, uh. You know, or I'm certainly willing to, to plot that whoever gets appointed has to go down to South Sound nine-one-one. In March, to be able to go and, go, go and do that. But, uh, I, I, I do think that, 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 because this first quarter is going to be. While the legislator is, the legislature is in session. And I think that SHAPE Executive Committee will have. Some roles to play in, in that, in that point in time. I don't think we want to leave that. Baconed. Again, again, if, if you're looking to just set or step in, then that's one thing, but I'd be willing to do that.
Well, be, before we get to, uh, the external boards and committees and commissions, let's just finish on page twenty. Are you okay with public safety advisory and youth council?
I'm okay with the public safety. It only meets six times a year. It's, 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 it's relatively few, uh. Uh, and I'm certainly willing to continue doing the youth council, uh. That'd be another thing that if the, the new person comes on, is really a, a youth-focused energized person. Then they wanted to do that, starting in Denver, that may be, uh, an option.
Great, that makes good sense, cause the new person may have some desires. And otherwise they may get appointed to some poles in the, uh, agenda, like South Sound nine-one-one, so.
Mr. Mayor, it's, it's, uh, on page, on the first page. The, uh, Lakewood Promise Advisory Board is not the second Thursday, it's the first Thursday, just for the record.
Okay, first Thursday, make a change to that. Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board. Burke will note that change, so we can update the, the document. Okay, so page twenty-one, let's just go to the top down, uh, just so we're good. Greater Tacoma Convention Center, I think. All is the alternate, although he's the alternate. Right, and that is typically Linda Smith, the citizen appointee, right? You want, you want to stay there? Oh, oh, yeah, right, okay. Um, you know, if someone wanted to do PCRC instead of me, I'd be happy to hand it over. I would like, uh, to stay on the transit board because that's been like drinking out of a fire hose. And so putting someone new into that would be a little challenging. We have an appointment process. Apparently by code, we have to do, and I saw that it's on the regular agenda for next week. To appoint a council member again to that term through twenty twenty-five for the Pierce Transit Board. So I, I would like to stay on that unless there's some massive objection.
I would like you to stay on that. For nine years, uh, but I, I concur that it, that, that one actually requires a council appointment specifically. To, uh. To, uh, satisfy the, the transit authorities, uh, requirements.
So if there's no further ado, then that will be the action item on that particular matter for next Monday. Okay, anyone else, uh, screaming up and down to serve on PCRC other than Mr. Bokey and perhaps myself? If not, we'll leave that one as is. Uh, then we have Pugil Sound Regional Council General Assembly, that's all of us. Uh, Mr. Anderson is on the PSRC Executive Committee, is that correct?
Uh, yes, and I, I, I'm willing to, uh, continue that for the remainder of my term. Uh, provided it allows remote participation, which it seems to be. Uh, really that's, uh, unfortunately, that's listening to. People give political opinions on things that have very little to do with the business of the organization. For most meetings and then something important comes up. And you work up a coalition and get voted down and move on. Uh, so it's, it's frustrating, but you need to be there to try to, uh, make, make sure that something. Particularly stupid doesn't get through that you might be able to stop.
Very good. The Sex Offender Policy Board was a position, I think, through AWC. That council member Farmer was fairly active in. I don't know if it's a required position for us to fill, but it's one available for us to fill. Is that right, Mr. Coughfield?
That is correct, Mayor, and, um, AWC has left it to this body if you wish to appoint somebody. You'll, you'll actually be representing AWC in all two hundred and eighty-one cities and towns. If not, we can let AWC know and they can reach out to one of the other cities or towns.
Great. So if someone has a, an interest in that, uh, desire and or the time. Uh, let me know. Speak now or forever hold your Ps and Qs. Mr. Coughfield, if this is something that is open for a period of sixty days. So that we might get a new council member in who may have an interest in this, is that available to us or do we need to let it know this month?
We, we can, we, we can check with AWC to see if they'll hold it open.
Okay, let's do that. All right, and then we've got SHAPE. I'm happy to, if, if there are two others that want to serve in that. I don't think it's a requirement that, that the mayor serve on SHAPE with an alternate. I think it just can be two appointed council members. As I recall the charter. Mr. Branstad, you wanted to serve in either one or the other capacity, right? Either primary? Okay? So let's put in, in Mr. Bokey, did you express an interest in that or?
If there's room for two, if there's not one, then he could.
Well, I think there is a member and an alternate, so why don't we put you down as a member and Mr. Branstad is the alternate? You guys can, either way. You know, you guys can work on that. I think that's correct, right? There has to be a member and an alternate. I'm looking to staff just to verify. I think we have to have a member and an alternate on SHAPE. Okay, so it's going to be, uh, Mr. Bokey and Mr. Branstad, and then they can coordinate on the meetings. I think you can both attend if you want to. Several cities do that. Yeah, exactly. Uh, it's been online Zoom, which has been convenient. So I went to the last one on Friday for a bit. Okay, South Sound Military Community Partnership, uh, that is pretty much set the way it is. We all get to go to that. Uh, the policy board, let's leave that open perhaps for a, a new council member appointment. The Tide Flats Siberia Plan Advisory Group, it doesn't look like that's very active, but Ms. Spears has probably got that under control. Ms. Spear, Tiffany Spear?
Yeah, that group is, is going to wind down. In fact, most of their meetings.
Yeah, that group is is going to wind down. In fact, most of their meetings have been canceled because they've been scheduled over the past two years and Tacoma City Council is moving to finalizing their their plan for that that area and this this group that includes, you know, you know, a whole group of folks that are just sort of being asked to provide after, we're at the point where they're being asked to write after the fact comments on things that are already been decided within the Tacoma structure. So I I think I think it's going to sunset during 2023.
Very good. Okay, on the next page, we've got these other affiliated boards and committees. And I believe Deputy Mayor Moss and Councilmember Branstad are wanting to stay on the multicultural coalition.
It is the first Thursday, not the second.
Okay. Make that note. And then the Sister City Association, it's been Councilmember Branstad. It doesn't sound like it meets that often, or does it? The Sister City Association that you're on?
Yeah, I'm going to continue to be a member of the association, which is really what this is saying. It's not. It's not really a liaison role significantly to 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 be able to go and do that. But I think one thing that I would is that in our discussions with Jim Hay, there was some expectation that someone would come and visit Jim Hay during this year. And since I've already done that once, I don't intend to do it again. So that's a separate, that's a separate issue from from this. It's just going to be there and help them with their planning, their their events in here.
Mr. Coffield and I chatted a bit about that, and so I think he has some plans to look into it and see dates and times, and then we'll discuss participation. Okay. Clover Park School District, various board meetings are listed there, so you have kind of notice of when your time will be as well as the community collaboration meetings and the various neighborhood association meetings. I was pleased to hear as part of the work plan for public safety, they're going to try to revitalize some of the neighborhood committee meetings or associations because we've got significant populations in our community that just don't have consistent meetings, and it would be a good thing for them to get off the ground again. So we may or may not need to do some resource allocation for those to get up and running.
So Mike, Mike, you you usually know this kind of stuff. So direct the question to Telecom Woodbrook. Did it just go by the boards when they lost her?
You know, these associations tend to have one or two people that that hold them together and get them going. And and that, it was David Anderson, right? But I talked with him a couple of weeks ago about this, and he's not quite sure when they're going to get back starting up together again. He's dealing with a lot of things between, you know, personal things as as well, and and is, I think, is looking for someone to take over energizing that that organization, but that hasn't hasn't developed. The Public Safety Advisory Committee is, they're intending to look at this and they're 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 looking beyond just re-energizing these five committees, but they're really looking at saying are there different footprints that maybe a liable organization could take place such as in 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 Springbrook, Springbrook Connections, who has a smaller footprint than the old the old committee, then they're actually functioning well as a neighborhood association. And that they thought that there would be some interest in the Nynza Park neighborhood of having a a neighborhood association if. So they're going to be working on how a group could apply to be recognized as a neighborhood association as opposed to one that's tied to a police district.
Well, great. Well, that kind of concludes where we needed to be for review and update of our liaison work to the various boards, committees, and commissions. We have a question from the city clerk.
Mayor, I did not hear if there was a liaison identified for the Community Services Advisory Board on page 20.
See, page 20. Isn't that rotating? Haven't we typically rotated?
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Mayor, that that'd be one that I think we can hold in advance until we've appointed a seventh council member. And then I'd be glad to negotiate with them whether I do that and they go to South Sound nine one one or vice versa. And I think there's only one meeting coming up. There's a meeting in February, and then there's not another meeting till after we'll have appointed someone. So I'm only to attend the one meeting that they have, and I I think it's February 15th or something like that. I'll just attend one meeting as a stand in temporarily until we can readdress that.
Very good. That works. Thank you. Okay, I think that does it for that. So we will now turn to our long range planning and strategic manager Tiffany Spear, who will join us virtually to give us an introduction on the 2024 Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation Periodic Review Process.
Thank you and good evening, Mr. Mayor. Tiffany Spear with Long Range Strategic Planning Manager. Very quickly, I just wanted to respond to the question regarding for terms for the Planning Commission. There are seven commissioners. There are four of them that will actually expire at the end of this year. Don Daniels, Brian Parsons, Ryan Pearson, and Paul Wagaman. And then the other three are all on until the end of 2026. So if there's members that have expressed to you maybe the desire out of those four that they won't be re-seeking terms, there will be that discussion this fall, I guess, for finding perhaps up to four new Planning Commission members. So jumping to the discussion this evening regarding the 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Review. We've already talked about this at the council level in several different ways, but I'm going to just go to a general discussion about what this process is, and then also cover the work plan and the proposed public participation program, which are going to be in front of you as part of a resolution to accept on January 17. So very quickly, there is a process statewide for what are called periodic reviews. They happen now by state law every 10 years. So the one that we are embarking on right now needs to be completed by December of 2024. We are one of the four Central Puget Sound counties that have to get ours done at that time. The rest have longer. On the right hand side here, you'll just see this general, I like to call it the layer of umbrellas, but how Lakewood's Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulations fit in with countywide planning policies, multi-county planning policies, which is the Central Puget Sound again, and Vision 2050. And then the Growth Management Act and several other state statutes, all of these are involved in the 2024 process. And where the focus is going to be is a review of the plan and then the relevant development regulations to in particular, housing and climate change are going to be subject of review and focus this next review. So the city did engage Burke Consulting, and you recently approved that contract and the funding through Commerce that will be funding that contract's payments. But they are working on the 24 periodic review, and related to that, they are also providing information regarding middle housing, so not single family detached or mid or high-rise apartments, but everything in between, and how those might be incorporated into Lakewood's land use planning more so than it is now. And then also the implementation of the 2021 Energy and Climate Change Element, which the city council adopted. As I mentioned, housing is one of the big focus areas for the 24 process, as is public participation, and then also equity. And there's now either statutory or multi-county or countywide planning policy language on all three of these as well as other items. As part of this whole thing as well, the city is going to be reorganizing the comprehensive plan to better reflect the way statute and regulation and agency policy asks things be reviewed and updated, just so it's easier. And it's also, I think, going to be easier to read for the general public. So we will be looking from front page to back page of the city's comprehensive plan. We will also be taking a look at the municipal code, the sections, they're in various titles, but that relate to updates that will need to be made to policies in the comprehensive plan. There's a number of guidance documents and support that the city will be receiving from either the state through the Department of Commerce or through Puget Sound Regional Council, and also the county with countywide planning policies and efforts. And what you'll see on the right are all of the areas where the city has to spend some time. So again, all of the sections within the comprehensive plan. And then the critical areas ordinance in particular needs to be reviewed. And then the zoning code, shoreline master program, and then a number of other sections within the regulations. And I say a review purposely because there won't necessarily be amendments to all of these, but they need to be reviewed and a found a finding adopted saying that they are in compliance with GMA regional planning policies and countywide planning policies if no changes are made. There will also be a review of some optional elements in the comprehensive plan. And as you're aware, there are three sub area plans now that are in place. Telecom, Lakewood Downtown, and the Station District. So those are all considered optional elements under GMA, but they will all be reviewed. And then in addition to that, the Energy and Climate Change Chapter, which was adopted again in 2021, and the Implementation Plan, the council just recently adopted a few months ago. This is just a comparison really quickly of the current table of contents for the way the comp plan is organized. And then below it, you'll see how it's broken out in a little more detail, and then also has a number of appendices. And again, this is for updating the organization of topics and readability to be more reflective of the way the GMA, Vision 2050, and other documents now organize topics. Public participation is a huge issue, and there's actually statutory language now saying that the city needs to have a plan in place or a program in place for public outreach, and it's intended to be pretty robust. So what we have done, not only on the city's own website, created a page specifically for the 2024 periodic review. And it has a number of announcements already, including things like all of the series of presentations that have occurred so far at the Planning Commission that people can watch and see the materials for at their leisure. We have also launched what is called Lakewood Speaks. And it is intended to be another, and perhaps even an easier to navigate option for the public to follow this process and also to provide public comment. So both of these are up and live. They will continue to get fleshed out as we move forward. There is something that came out of the Evans Schools report regarding the climate change chapter last year that is being used as a foundation for how we're going to do public participation over the next two years for this periodic review. And that was to say, the city should be cognizant and try to minimize consultation fatigue by looking at how we can best access information by subject matter experts, whether that is a community-based organization, whether that is something like the Korean Women's Association, something like an affordable housing developer or association, all of the groups that the city may want to access in terms of what they think and want to recommend on any particular topic in the comp plan process. And rather than just come back to them numerous times over the next two years, just being very mindful and efficient in the way that we access their knowledge and their time, and trying to get as much out of them with as few touches, if you will, again, to prevent that consultation fatigue. I mentioned people speak. In addition to that, for public engagement, the city is also going to use the website coordination with community-based organizations using Lakewood 311 and social media and its magazine. Direct mailing, we'll do neighborhood meetings in person as well as online sessions for the public outreach to groups and associations. We are doing, we already started Planning Commission discussions, and right now it's running actually every one of their meetings. We talk about something regarding this effort. But we will also be bringing information to the council throughout 23 and 24. And then also looking to the rest of the city's boards and commissions for relevant subject matter feedback as well. There is a participation program and work plan incorporated into a resolution that was provided to you in tonight's packet, and that's because it's recommended by Commerce that this is actually done in a formal way. Should there be a question or even a legal challenge regarding the process in the future, there is a way to simply to easily say this is exactly the steps that the city took to make sure A, we covered all of the steps we were supposed to per state law, and B, the public had an opportunity to participate all along the process. We are looking at what we're calling right now a task force where we will be pulling either each one of these separately or in various groups depending on the topic individuals or groups to provide feedback. And here you see a number of the city's boards or commissions, but we're also wanting to address information with the youth council, reaching out to public agencies and utilities, cultural organizations, the environmental community, and also business and development communities. So we may have one or two kind of huge get togethers for everybody to get general updates or get general feedback. But we will also be strategically reaching out to the groups that make sense to when a particular topic is being reviewed. In housing and equity, we've talked, I think, about this a bit over this last year, but you'll see the table that shows the new housing and employment or job targets for the city of Lakewood between now and 2044. So this is something that we're planning for. But in addition to that, the GMA was updated and PSRC's Vision 2050 and countywide planning policies also were updated to say we need to be looking for policies and regulations that may have resulted in the past or could in the future result in racially disparate impacts, displacement and or inclusion exclusion in housing, excuse me, including zoning, disinvestment, and infrastructure availability. We're also supposed to be looking at policies and regulations to try to undo any of those things that are found. And then bringing all of that to you as part of the housing element update and the equity analysis that's required in this periodic review. So that will be in front of the Planning Commission as well as yourselves, and we will also be getting, again, that community feedback to see the perspective coming from our residents on how the experience in the greater Lakewood area has been. As you well know, the city is 26 years old, and so many of the policies that resulted in the way the land is developed around here occurred prior to incorporation. So there will be probably things that are brought up and discussed that were done before city, the city ever formed. And we will just need to acknowledge that and try to address it as appropriate as best Lakewood is able. So that is my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. Otherwise, there will be on your schedule throughout this year and through mid 24 just periodic times when I and others will be in front of you, providing you status updates on this process. And by all means, we can provide you any written feedback in the meantime between those presentations as you desire.
Very good, Mr. Anderson.
Thanks, Tiffany. Couple of things. One, starting at the equity and housing and working backwards. I've had substantial experience over the last sorry to say, four decades with respect to real estate in Pierce County and the patterns and its history. I am not aware of any redlining that really direct redlining that or area covenants or zoning in within what is now the city of Lakewood that created an adverse impact. The pure economics of cost may have, but that's a different subject. Whereas in Tacoma, I had a client who was an executive vice president of a major bank. He came back from World War II, and they didn't want to sell him a house north of Sixth Avenue because he was Greek. And so the vestiges that are easily seen if you look at the demographics of the North End of Tacoma and the East Side of Tacoma, where there was World War II housing and lower income housing. So while it's pertinent some. So while it's pertinent some places, at first I think we should look to see if we can find. Any evidence that there were governmental practices or. I would call it redlining imputed to government. With respect to insured loans, for example. That that really affected us before we get too deep into that. I I mean, just be ignorant of it, but I like I said, I anecdotally, I I've. I've seen it places can very easily identify at different places as my example, in my example, that's only but one of them. But I just don't know what happening in Lakewood that way. Not that there weren't individual problems, but as I mean institutionally. The second thing is I. Was a participant in a briefing on the prefiled bills in the. State Legislature and frankly, with respect to housing. And local control, there are some that the nicest thing I could say about them is they're very impactful. So. Maybe maybe Mr. Bueller was here. I watch him wince when I suggest that we may want to have a pause. That we see what kind of nonsense comes out of Olympia. Because there are some things in there that could go through. That would negate efforts we've made, negate our current provisions. Keep us from doing things we might want to do and require a do over to comply. So there. There were some. Like so really, really impactful and interesting. Things that came up that were frankly shocking to me. The shocking ones might not make it through, but. Some others might. So thanks.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Tiffany, thank you for the summary of what's going to happen and how. And how and how that's going to work out. I'm glad to see that it includes coming back. At key milestones back to the council to let us know what's going on or to. Ask us for for some input is so they will. You know, we have some participation as well. I had a couple of questions in the course of your presentation. You spoke about a public participation, public outreach. And. Almost as if they were synonymous. And you know, what really is the real written requirement is a public is public participation. And and and. And to me, public participation. Is differs from outreach in that outreach is process. We have a list of things that we that we do and 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 things to do that. But participation is more of an outcome based thing. Did your process actually get? People that came in and 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 use their voice to 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 inform us to be able to go and do that. And the and the public participation plan that seems to be outlined by Burke. Looks very much like the public participation plan that they have done for us before. That in my view, in many respects. Have had elements of our community that have not been responsive to those strategies. And yet we seem to be saying, well, we're just going to continue to use the same ones about and identify groups and hold public. Hearings and a few meetings to be able to go and do that. And I didn't see anything in there that was. Unique to representing. How to break through the barriers that some groups in our community have to participating. To actually get them to use their voice and 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 help us here. So. I I'd really be interested in in knowing. What different than the usual strategies Burke thinks need to be applied in Lakewood. To reach our diverse demographics holistically. But I guess that will someone from Burke be here next time as the plan is considered for a vote to 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 talk about it?
Not at this time. No, I can respond a little bit now if you'd like. First and foremost, what's going to be different than in recent efforts at least regarding sub area plans, et cetera. Is that the city council approved a neighborhood coordinator in the budget and we are starting the process of seeking that. Position to be filled and their primary first step or first. Work project is going to be this 2024 periodic review. So they will be not only working with me, but also working with the Burke staff. To be the be a point person. We are seeking also connections right now with what are called community based organizations, which is. By and for a particular group, whether that's an ethnic group, a religious group, a business group. But it the thought process here is reaching out to. Individuals and groups that maybe haven't been repeatedly reached out to. And then also having this neighborhood coordinator and Burke consulting support for them. To be literally out in the neighborhoods doing events. It's not just come to a Monday night at 7:00 PM. Or Wednesday night at 6:30 PM type of situation. There's also going to be a concerted effort to have things in multiple languages. And that includes the written and oral presentations that are provided. So the the idea here is to step it up at least two or three notches, if you will. And and make this a more successful response rate. The difficulty, as you know, though, council is that you can lead a horse to water, right? There's going to need to be an expectation that there will be people that just won't participate period. We will certainly try to improve the percentages over past projects that long range planning has done. But it will rely in part on on public interest and whether they want to participate.
All right. Well, thank you. I hope to do that. And maybe we can lead some horses to Kool-Aid and do better.
Any other questions, Ms. Spear, on the overview of the process? Great. Well, thank you very much for the report.
Thank you.
So you can see there on our worksheet, the items tend to be scheduled for the next regular city council meeting. Fairly straightforward. And now we'll get into reports by the city manager, Mr. Coffield.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a few updates for you. This is a follow up to your meeting last week. We were contacted by the Nisqually Tribe earlier this afternoon and. Actually, I forwarded placed on the dais a copy of the letter that they sent over. As well as their promotional piece for their Chief Leshai Memorial Walk, which is scheduled for Friday, January 27. Will kick off at 10:30 AM over at the Oakbrook Plaza, which is the location of the Chief Leshai Monument. There'll be some words and a little bit of a program there. And then walk over to Fort Stillicum Park in the back area there where the where the cemetery and the dog off leash dog parks comes together. And the new building that's over there. Where there'll be, that's actually going to be a key part of the improvements that we expect to take on undertake with. In partnership with the Nisqually Indian Tribe, probably later this year into 2024. So again, 10:30 AM at the Oakbrook Plaza on 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 the 27. I know this came up earlier in the meeting, but we did learn from our sister city folks that. The Gimhee will be inviting us or representatives of the city, including our sister city association. To travel back to Gimhee City, Republic of Korea from May 4th through May 7th, which is a Thursday through a Sunday. And so I think Mary, my conversation about who you'd like to attend and travel travel back there. Just real briefly, wanted to let you know, we had a follow up discussion with representative of Camp Murray regarding the boat launch last Friday. The the punchline is this, right now they are focused on. Two key initiatives as it relates to seeking funding from the state legislature, specifically from the state capital budget. Has to do with the new headquarters buildings, the building that they're operating out of is. I think it predates World War I, actually. It's been around for a long time and I know some of us have been in that building and. Those need to be replaced. The other is they have some other asset issues that they need to address. So right now this boat launch is not a high priority for them. However, the way that we framed it with them is, you know, really what we're looking to do is to. You know, improve and you know, make it better than what's down there right now. The other concern that they have is they have just federalized their security. So it now aligns with JBLM, given that they're part of JBLM. But they do want to keep an open mind. And so what we had suggested. Was to do some joint planning, hopefully beginning later this year and develop a master plan for that site, including taking in. Their security concerns because right now that is open to the public. It's not fenced off. And then once a master plan is in place, we could then secure, we could then look to apply for. Park related funds that do not compete with what their current or future priorities are as it relates to their installation. And I could tell that that did resonate with them and they got that. They also pointed out that the city has been a good partner in the past on initiatives like this, specifically. With the relocation of the of the entrance to 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 Camp Murray and that the city took the lead on that as well. So there is some history there. So where we left it is that they are going to take that idea back to the tag, back to Major General Doherty and his team. The uniforms and see where that goes. And in the meantime, once the session is over, the legislative session, which kicked off today, by the way, the 105 day session. To, you know, do a do a site visit down there and do a walk through, talk through it. That'll probably be about the April, May timeframe. So that's kind of where we left it. You know, so again, long story short, it's not a high priority, but it's. It's something that we'll we'll continue to have 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 dialogue with them on that. And they certainly appreciated the. The time and the interest that we have that we have down there. Think actually this came up, the park signs. So you know, rather than addressing park signs, reader board signs and wayfinding and. Individual silos, what we'd like to do is recommend coming back with one comprehensive approach to that. From a budgetary standpoint. The $20,000 has already been allocated to park signs. However, to do this right, we estimate it to cost about $80,000. However, a good portion of that is already available through the ARPA funds. So then it would just be a matter of trying to figure out what small portion we would need from the general fund to kind of bring that all together. So we plan on bringing that back to you for your review as part of your. I think it's February, February 13 study session. So more 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 to follow on that. Also on February 13th, we're hoping to bring back street ends. And you remember, remember in 2022, we kicked off a review of the 2009 P RAB. Recommendations on on the, actually there's now we're not down to 11 street ends that are left right now. And the focus of of this analysis was really just to get a better understanding of the lay of the land. On each of the street ends, not an official survey, but something a little bit better than we've done in the past. And we've done that as well as putting a pencil to what the cost could be to redevelop each each street end. And as part of the process, you know, the team, they've identified a number of criteria. And long story short, wanted to let you know that the three street ends that kind of have risen to the top based on that criteria. Understanding that number one, the council gets to decide if you want to move forward on improving street ends. And then of course, which ones. However, just want to let you know that through this process, the ones that have risen to the top. Right at the top is the one down actually adjacent to Bill's Boathouse. Wadsworth Street, right on American Lake. And actually, if you think about it, that actually makes sense. It's kind of wide open and. Gets a lot of use. The second one is at 104th Street and Melody Lane on Lake Louise. And then the third one is a bit surprising is Hilltop Lane, Hilltop Lane on Gravity Lake. However, the other one on Gravity Lake is down at the bottom and a lot of that just has to do with the, you know, the. The geography of the site and such. So those are, those are kind of the top three right now. And we're still fine tuning it and I just want to give you a heads up. This is not, you know, this is not something that we have planned to do any of these. The council doesn't have any money in the park CIP or anything like this. Again, what you asked for was an update to the P RAB report. Again, from a scoping standpoint and from a financing standpoint. So that's what we're bringing back to you. Just want to just give you, give you a kind of a warning order on that, if 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 you will. Also, something that has come up that we're going to bring back to you and it's a bit of an emergency is we have a backup emergency generator over at the police station. And long story short, it's we're having some challenges with it from a technological standpoint. It's over 13 years old and we've been patching it and long story short, it needs to be replaced. And it's about an $80,000 need. And so we'll be bringing that forward to you. Though there are some savings within the facility budget, I think of about $35,000. So the actual net need is about $55,000. But we've been holding it together. We thought we could continue to do so, but we do need to, we do need to, we do need to replace it. You know, later this year, there's a couple of major park projects that, you know, we're hoping to bid or get ready to bid. One is American Lake Park and the other is Ward's Lake Park, two huge projects. And so what we'd like to do at a future study session, I believe, and it's scheduled for February 27. Is actually similar to some of the transportation projects is kind of layout. The projects and and have you get an idea of where we are on the design. I will tell you that both of the projects, just because of inflation and supply chain issues and something like that. Are facing some some cost challenges. Ward's Lake is not that bad, but American Lake Park, it's 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 a good sized delta. But we're still reviewing the numbers and we'll have more information for you. In 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 February. And unfortunately, it's just a reflection of where we are from where we thought we were going to be two years ago. You know, given the legislative session kicked off today, you might recall that during the last session. One of our state legislators, Representative Bernowski, secured funding through the Department of Commerce to develop a report on the geographic location. Of where behavioral health and long term care facilities. In terms of people from state hospitals are being released to. You might recall that I gave you an update earlier this fall, the city was actively involved in providing feedback and input and how that report should become together. The report was supposed to be ready by the middle part of December to be presented to the state legislature. We did follow up a couple of weeks ago and we heard back last week that it's not ready yet. They're still putting the final touches on it. It's under review by. As far as we know, Department of Commerce. So I just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And of course, once that becomes available, we'll be, we'll be sure to share that with you. You might have seen that the LASSA Executive Director, Jan Hutchins, has 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 retired. And you know, she's been heading up that organization for over 30 years. And so Mayor and Council just wanted to kind of put on the table, if you'd like to maybe recognize her with some kind of a proclamation or something along those lines. And I'm seeing a lot of nods there and that's something that we could do at a future city council meeting, maybe in February or March. So convenient to her schedule as 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 well. And then as it relates to your calendar, this Saturday is the New Year, New You Community Walking festivities. So you can come and walk and get some exercise or you can be like me and just show up for the food trucks. So because it's going to be a lot of food trucks there. Or you can also try out some yoga and and meditation. Though if you do get caught up like a pretzel, I'm not going to come over and help you out. You're on your own. You're on your own. And so that'll be again down at Fort Stillicum Park from 10:00 AM to 2:30. On January 27th, I I mentioned the Chief Leshai Memorial Walk, but also in that morning from eight to 1:00 AM SS, I'm sorry. SSHAP shape is partnering with a number of housing partners to help facilitate an affordable housing forum. And I know Councilmember Branstadder is going to be attending. Actually, one of our staff, Tiffany Spears, is going to be a speaker and a presenter. At the event, talking about everything that the city of Lakewood does in the area of 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 housing. Also, if you're interested on January 26th and 27th, which is. Also, if you're interested on January 26th and 27th, which is a Thursday night and a Friday night, Pierce County is, is undertaking their annual point in time count. And I know I sent you a link, or if you need a link to, if you'd like to go out and register and do the count, we can help with that. And then just lastly, I mentioned that the state legislature, they kicked off their 105 day session, their long session to develop, really their focus is to develop their next pioneer budget for 23 to 25 with an operating budget, a capital budget and a transportation budget. And I know I'm speaking with the mayor and the deputy mayor, we've identified February 1st as a date to go down and just touch bases with our state legislators on their turf down in Olympia. And so what we're, you know, we have six of them. We're also contemplating maybe if there's anybody else that we need to drop by and see. So we'll keep you posted and appraised of that. But what we'd like to try and do is, you know, get all those meetings scheduled sometime in the, you know, morning into the early afternoon, so that, you know, it's not such a long day down there. But again, we'll keep you posted as we, as we make those appointments. And hopefully, yes, that's correct, Mayor. So, so with that, it's kind of my update for this evening.
Note that I think today was the, the end date for Sound Transit's online survey of folks regarding this, our sounder station, and then they were with that data going to move and they'd have some other type events in a different format going future. But don't necessarily know that we need a presentation, but when they have it, I'd kind of like to see a summary of what information that provided.
Any other questions? I, I had a quick question, speaking of LASSA and Jan Hutchins, I wanted to follow back on the, the project funding request they made through into us with our ARPA funds. There was some information that came back that I think it was the State Housing Trust Fund application was either rejected because they determined that the cost per foot as proposed was too high, is that correct?
Cost per unit, Mayor.
Per unit, okay. Do we know where that project is? Because as I recall, sitting around the table with our state legislative delegation, they were kind of looking to us as a participant with our funds before they participated with their push for funds.
And that's exactly where we still are, Mayor. And we, you know, LASSA, I think right now they're in a bit of a transition in hiring a new executive director. You know, when, you know, we did ask, okay, since you haven't received the $4.2 million in the Housing Trust Fund,
Yeah.
what's your, you know, and, and their, their response was, well, we're going to seek funding elsewhere. So that, yeah, which is, I mean.
So we have time still on ours.
So the, the answer is yes, as it relates to your ARPA funds. However, there is limited time in terms of seeking a state capital budget grant for LASSA as a part of this session.
Isn't that already in play to the tune of $500,000?
The short answer is yes, but whether or not the state legislature will support it based on
Right.
what you have just outlined so eloquently.
Okay. Very good. Mr. Anderson and Mr. Branstadter.
Well, I, I guess maybe questions poses comments. With respect to Camp Murray's federal security concerns, I think that's a red herring. That should be explored. They, the issue, as I understand it at Camp Murray, was that their security and access, gate access, didn't meet federal standards. And so they had to change the system that they used and their practices to conform so that you can get on and off Camp Murray and go through the back door to JBLM. And they reopened that gate when they complied. So I don't see how that one would would apply as a problem for what we want to do. With respect to street ends, and this might be just a request for the, the city attorney's office. I would like to know what property, what real property the county owns on each of the lakes in question. And you can exclude, for the purpose of the inquiry, you can exclude for the American Lake and, and Lake Silicon, because we know we own lakefront property and fee there.
The county or the city?
The, the city.
City, okay.
Excuse me. And the, the issue there is there is a case with respect to overburdening and easement. Department of Fisheries years ago. And it, the linchpin of that case was that the, the governmental entity actually owned a property on the lake, didn't just have an easement or right of way up to it. So it's conceivable that on Lake Louise or Gravel Lake, where we don't apparently own any property and fee, that any right to use the right of way is a right to use the right of way, but not get on to the lake. So you could bring it up and put a bench there. I mean, that's a conceivable legal outcome of, of that anomaly. My recollection of the case was it was pretty clear that if you own a piece of property on the other side of the lake and you had an access point, as long as you didn't overburden it, you could use it for access to the waterway. But then you had to, had to actually be a lakefront property owner to, to utilize the, the lake access. But what may have changed, that was a long time ago. When that case was in, it might, circumstances might be different because there are many different types of ownership. But some of these are, my recollection also from the prior iteration of, or, or look at this is some of these are, and I don't know if Hilltop Lane is one of them. But some of these are situations where the real property owner actually owns the underlying fee. And it's encumbered with a right of way or easement. And so there is no ownership of lakefront property in, in the public. So just something to look at before you spend a lot of time on every one of these. I said it, American Lake and, and Lake Silicon, we obviously own part, part property on there, so that wouldn't be an issue. And those are my, those are my two items.
Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, I, I do think that with respect to, you know, we were generally looking at supportive of the LASSA project that, that our money would go to. I, I say that I'm not surprised that someone looking at it saw the same thing that we saw, that it was a lot of dollars per unit. And it's, but that's not in, that's not different from an awful lot of supportive housing projects that have been, been proposed and gone on. But to Mr. Caulfield's noting that one of our asks in the capital budget is also for the state to contribute some money to that project. It would be interesting to know from our lobbyists and from our delegation, whether us actually moving forward and confirming that we're going to contribute that million dollars would help get a positive decision this legislative session, which would, which would mean that we don't really have the, the two years to mull it over. If, if we need to do something in the next 90 days to, to influence the availability of dollars, because you know, the way, the way the legislature is, it's a lot harder to get dollars in the second, second year than in, than in the first. So, and hopefully, they will move quickly to get a new executive director and the new executive director can confirm what the vision for, for the growth of LASSA is.
Just like to echo Councilmember Branstadter's comments that that would be probably a question that we can ask our legislators on February 1st.
Yeah, we could maybe perhaps make our own funding contingent on getting a state grant, Mr. Anderson.
We, we could also ask for any information that's available, either evidencing the state agency's conclusion or supporting their conclusion. We might want to make our own decision.
Right. It's a topic, it's topical. So we need to figure that out. But yeah, if we can reach out to our folks, great.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll just, I'll just jump in. I, that's a pretty big, they had a pretty big ass to the state that they did not get. So it's a pretty big hole or gap.
Right.
So it'd be nice to know how they're going to fill in or what their plan is when they say alternate financing. Or are they just going to try to go back and rework the plan and come back to the state next year or the next round of funding? I'm not sure how often they do rounds of funding. And I know they have different pots of money that they do rounds in and depending on the type of projects. They have tax credit ones and bond ones and various things like that, the State Housing Finance Commission. Yeah, I think at some point in time, I mean, not in the next two weeks, but I mean, I think we need to understand what they're, what the board's plan is.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Caulfield.
You probably heard the governor has, has proposed a $400 million funding source for quote unquote housing. And if you look at the detail, it's broken down into different components and you know, certainly LASSA should be able to find a way in there, but, but that's a six-year program as well. So that could be another potential source for them.
So remind us briefly on the, the criteria on the ARPA fund, and we know it has to be expended by 2024.
No, 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 Mayor, it has to be appropriated by December of 2024, and it has to be spent by December of 2026.
Got it. So what happens if you appropriate and they don't spend?
You just got to give a, I imagine we give it back to the federal government.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully there's not.
And that's a risk, or you could, or you could reappropriate very quickly.
Yeah, yeah, actually.
And there are so many government, internal city liquid purposes that we could use it for. It would be easy to throw it on top of the law enforcement budget or something.
That's exactly right, Councilmember Anderson, spot on. The, the first 10 million you can use for general government purposes.
Very good. Okay.
Thank you.
Good clarity. Thank you. Well, if that's it, Mr. Caulfield, we appreciate it. We'll turn to council comments. We do have a closed session after our meeting today, so just be cognizant of that. Mr. Boke.
Yeah, I'm hoping to make the, the walk. I won't make the yoga because that would just be too painful and, and, and really, you, you know, might be entertaining for some people, but it wouldn't be entertaining for me. It would just be disturbing. It just wouldn't, it wouldn't be good. So I'm, I'm, and, and I'm excited about it, actually. I, I think these are neat community events and I hope, it sounds like the yoga, the yoga, the yoga went well. I hope the walk does well and, and it just kind of sets the tone going forward. And I appreciate our staff's efforts on, on all these community events that, that seem to go really well. And I know this is something that we've talked about at the, at the county, at the city level for a long, long time when we funded the, in, in the Colonial Center was completed and Imperial Plaza. We've been looking forward to all these things. And I just am really very appreciative of, of staff and, and the city's efforts to, to find the right combination of events and really get, get people moving, including myself.
Absolutely. Anything we can do to get you moving is a good thing.
Yeah, that is, that is a very good thing. Maybe I'll even walk there. How about that? Is that a challenge? Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will just speak to that also. I, at the Arts Commission meeting this evening, I did talk to Ms. Martinez about the Love Lakewood program, and she said all the classes were full and doing well. I am going to do one of the yoga ones, but I did sign up for the meditation one. So I will do that and hope to be there on Saturday. You're joining me on the meditation one, right?
Councilmember Branstadter. You're not going to do yoga?
No, I, I do plan to go to the walk and like Councilmember Boke, yoga is a spectator sport.
Very good. Mr. Anderson.
I'll have to pass on yoga, although I, I did follow my mother and do it when I was about 12 years old. As a budding hurdler, I could get my feet behind my head. And now halfway there would cause major fractures. Two things. Every once in a while legislative bodies get something right. You know, we have asked as part of the legislative agenda or as a kind of a, a down, down menu item or through SSMCP to have the legislature cause recognition of interstate professional licensing reciprocity among our four military spouses. Last week, President Biden signed a military oriented bill that had, that provision injected into it. It requires recognition of professional licensing for all licensed professions but for lawyers. Regulated by, you could either think because they're regulated by the judiciary or because they're not trustworthy. So one or the other. So it requires it, and as long as they're licensed in the state for that particular profession, they have practiced within the last two years, not subject to discipline. And they have military orders to a state where they're not licensed and they get the licensed reciprocity for the period of the military orders, subject to discipline by the state. They have to consent to discipline by the state where they're located. The interesting thing about this is twofold. One, there's no mention of implementation, except it's effective immediately with the legislation. And it's made part of the service members, they'll change it, Service Members Civil Relief Act, used to be soldiers and sailors. So there's government enforced, federal government enforcement, private rights of action, right to a, right to bring a class action, right to attorney's fees and damages. And so the state is actually, all states who don't have that recognized quickly or subject to liability. Because there is some teeth in the SCRA. If there is already an existing compact, the terms of that compact between those two states applies. But very interesting, after it's been worked so long on the individual basis to have an overriding federal statute imposed. Sure. Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Anderson, for bringing that up, because today I was in a, a meeting where it got mentioned that the state was dropping some legislation to, the state legislature to, to implement or to, with licensure. So is state, is, is state legislative action now even required or, or will it be implemented on its own? There are a variety of provisions in the bill proposed by Representative Levitt and others that move in this direction. It isn't as broad. The state proposed state legislation isn't as broad, but it provides for some implementation, it provides for some reporting. And I actually commented on it to Representatives Levitt and Brnovsky that, yes, I'm, I'm in favor of the bill, but it should be amended to be consistent with the federal law and also to instruct the state agencies to immediately implement it rather than come back with studies and whatever else is in the fine print. And I don't want to put you on the spot. But we know this has been a problem for a while. Are there, are there specific professions or specific licenses that have proven to be the real hangup? Yes. The, the teachers' union and the nurses' union. SEI, teachers' union, because that's what the WA does. The, both of which have shortages, by the way. The extrapolating, in addition to SEIU being rather The extrapolating, I, i, in addition to S C I U being rather militant in the support of its membership with respect to the unions, there was a, I would call it a quasi legitimate concern in that there's such a nursing shortage that they're bringing nurses in on H one B visas. And so it wasn't the military, I don't think it was the military spouse issue they were so concerned about or people from other states. It was bringing in foreign trained nurses, and they would make the argument that that, they, they shouldn't get any licensure. So it was contrary to their legislative agenda, which is nobody from outside should be licensed here unless they're licensed in Washington. So we'll, we'll see, but uh they had particular sway with the legislature and, and there were individual uh you know, the barber union didn't do quite as well, you know, they, they could, they could get that through, but uh uh it was harder with nurses and the teachers. And I, I took particular interest because my wife, my wife, one time was one of those interstate teachers had to get a, a authority from the government of WAM to teach grade school. Uh because she wasn't certificated there. Um the uh with respect to the selection of uh council members, I'm going to propose, depending on how many applicants we get, that we not uh interview everyone and that we limit it to three to six interviewees, which is usually more than uh enough in any normal job application, uh interview situation. And the way to do that relatively simply would be to give each of the six of us the opportunity to, to collect uh or vote for three different people out of the pool to uh be interviewed. And the way the math works out on that, you'd have to have at least three because you'd have eighteen votes. And you could have six votes each for three people. That's the most concentrated it could get. The most you could get is six people, three votes each for six people. So you get between three and six, and I think it would wino the, we, we could wino the, the herd down. Last time I think we had a dozen. And uh some of them just plainly weren't going to go anywhere. And we had somebody who rose to the top pretty quickly, so. So I, that's my comments, except for the fact that I will be on a plane next Monday, so I won't be here.
Okay, very good. Councilmember or Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will be doing the walk minus the yoga. I tried it once and I didn't walk for a week, so and I also, um Ms. Spears spoke about Brett reaching out to others. They did reach out to me and I will be responding to them tomorrow to, for conversation. So that's what I'll be doing. That's it.
Great. Okay, well, I will be doing the walk on Saturday. I did the yoga, the first